Good morning. This is the meeting of Baltimore City Council Education, Workforce and Youth Committee. I am Councilman Stokes, representing the 12th District and chair of the committee. Some of the committee members have not arrived yet, but we're going to move on. Council Vice President Middleton is excused. Councilman Zeke Cohen says he will be running late, but he'll be here. The Committee on Education, Workforce and Youth Committee is responsible for creating opportunities for our young people, ensuring economic opportunity and prosperity for our Baltimore workforce and supporting our most vulnerable neighbors. The committee areas of jurisdiction include public education, labor relations, workforce development, employment, public works, recreation and youth affairs. Issue areas include, but are not limited to, education, including adult education, higher education, workforce development, labor, senior affairs, veterans, children, accessibility and disability issues, recreation and parks and historical landmarks. Okay, we have Mr. Trey Hayes, who was committee staff on this committee. Before we get started, we ask you to turn off your cell phones. We don't want to hear it ringing. Before I get started, I wanted to, I wanted to first thank you guys. I talk about y'all a lot. Y'all have done a great job in terms of the, so I want to thank Harold, Kevin, Austin, Emily, Akia, Sharona, is that right? I'm getting good. Brandon, Lillian, Maria, Hannah, Alicia, Sharice, Cherie, Kayla, Destiny, Erica, Kiana, Lyric, Keith and Michelle for your leadership, under your leadership of the president here. I just want to thank you guys because y'all have made a tremendous change. Not saying it was bad, I don't mean it that way, but it shows the commitment that y'all have and y'all see this on the same page. When you're on the same page, you see the results. So I want to personally thank you guys for your leadership. You picked a good team, great people. So we're going to start off with you, Mrs. Alicia Lee, CEO, President.
Thank you so much, Councilman Stokes. What a beautiful way to start. Thank you for honoring and sharing the name of each of our team members. We have a really amazing team and it feels great to be recognized by the committee in that way. We're going to open with-
Real quick, before you cut off, I got to mention that Tyler from the mayor's office, he's not here, he's just running late.
Okay, thank you. We're going to open with our amazing board chair, Larry Simmons Jr.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman Stokes, colleagues, community leaders, friends. My name is Larry Simmons and I am the Chair of the Baltimore Children and Youth Fund's Boarding Directors. And today, we're proud to present to you our highlights, achievements and some challenges from the past year. I'd just like to share really quickly one of, oh, before I even move forward, I also would like to introduce my colleague and co-board member, Tierra Hawks.
Hawkins.
Thank you, Tierra, for being here. But as I move on, I just really wanted to share one of my personal highlights from this year, and that's attending the Learning Labs opening plenary. This was a transformative experience for not only myself, but for 100 grantees, board members and staff that attended. This was our visit to the legacy sites in Montgomery, Alabama. It was a hands-on professional learning opportunity and a truly transformative experience that invited us to reckon with our shared history of racial injustice and reflect together on impacts in our current work with Baltimore Children and Youth. And it just really was a time for us to really fellowship and get together as a community and come back changed to continue and to do the work of building in our community. And also, the Learning Labs, this is a six-month signature series that is about citywide learning for the youth development ecosystem here in Baltimore City, which is being convened by the Baltimore Children and Youth Fund. The theme for this year is to, it's the power in storytelling and really supporting our grantees and community members and being able to tell the story of the work that they do and the work that they're doing for their community. Thank you and have a good morning.
Thank you so much. We're going to start this morning by having our team members who are present with us introduce themselves. And so I'm going to start and turn it over to my colleagues.
Good morning. My name is Emily Corey. I am the Executive Assistant to the President as well as the Board Administrator. And I'd love to share with you today that for several months in a row now, we are going on 100% board attendance to all committee meetings, board meetings, et cetera. So we're thrilled about that engagement.
I'm Kiana Goram, the Director of Capacity Building. And a KPI that I'm excited about is our 96% satisfaction rate for all of our technical assistance efforts.
Good morning. My name is Erica Miller. I'm the Director of Data Management. Within my department, I'm thrilled that we are introducing the infusion of data literacy into our organizational culture.
Good morning. My name is Sharice Page and I'm Director of Grant Making with BCYF. Within my department, I am thrilled that we are currently reviewing over 100 applications to welcome the new round of BCYF grantees to our family.
Good morning. My name is Sharona Lawrence. I'm the Vice President of Operations and Culture, and I'm glad to share that we have 71% of our positions for BCYF filled.
My name is Brandon. I'm the Senior Director of External Affairs. I personally want to introduce Austin. He's our Marketing Manager. He's taking photos right now. And some of the statistics from us is our Facebook read since we last spoke with you all has increased by 40%. And last month, we hosted our very first Faith-Based Leaders brunch. We convened faith-based leaders with associated Black charities and had some folks such as Rashad Singletary from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhoods and Noel Duque from the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success attend with us.
And good morning. My name is Hana McOver. I'm a Senior Program Officer with the Baltimore Children and Youth Fund, and I am thrilled to share that with pre-application technical assistance offerings, 97% of attendees reported that they strongly agreed or agreed that the offerings that we were providing would help prepare them to submit their application to the Grassroots Fund.
Thank you so much, team. And my name is Alicia Lee, and I'm the President and CEO of the Baltimore Children and Youth Fund. And I'm excited to present an overview of our last year's work, including some highlights, some strengths, and of course, share some challenges along the way. I want to highlight that our team is made up of 71.4% identify as women and 85.7% identify as Black, Brown, Indigenous or Asian as well. Okay, all right. So since we've seen you last, we're really excited, the last time we saw you, we were exciting, excited to launch into a strategic plan. And so we're now returning to you. We have begun the implementation of our new strategic plan. This plan was created through a process, a methodology of centering youth and youth leadership. And also, we made sure to convene organizations, individuals and donors that focused on leveraging economic mobility for the children and youth of Baltimore City. We were able to establish some alignment so that our programs, our funding, our purpose is all in alignment, and we're happy today to be able to present to you some of the ways that our strategic plan is innovative and new. The first thing is that we are entering a new word into the lexicon in Baltimore City, and that term is the youth development ecosystem. And so we're using the term ecosystem because it reminds us of this natural truth about the world that when networks, a vibrant interconnected web of networks operate in a healthy way, all of the life that's sustained there is viable and healthy. And so we imagine this ecosystem to be made up of, well, this very room, folks who are involved, whether it's through government agencies, this chamber in particular, the youth and staff leaders that are running the programs, the children themselves and the young people, their families, their caregivers, and many people who service them in professional capacities. We have adopted through that lens, a new mission statement, which we're really excited to share, and that is that BCYF builds partnerships that support the ecosystem focused on opportunities for Baltimore youth by providing support to leaders and organizations. And so we are zeroing in on our purpose and mission to support the leaders and the organizations that serve young people. We have a new vision statement, and so we envision a more just, creative and abundant Baltimore where all young people live, thrive and lead. We also envision an ecosystem of sustainable youth programs with full agency, liberated from the harm of structural racism and inequity, and able to thrive in abundance. And so you're going to see that word abundance show up many times as a lamp post for us in our work. And moving forward, we have adopted one single value, and that value is Ubuntu, which is a South African philosophy, that I am because of who we all are. And it demonstrates the interconnectedness of the ecosystem. We strive internally to work in collaborative and interconnected ways, and we also strive to work externally with our grantee partners and the rest of the ecosystem by being a part of the system, not underneath of it, not on top of it, but by being proximate with the community to build the next phase of this work. Our strategic plan has outlined five critical new three-year goals, which we are excited about. These are stretch goals for us, and we're excited to work towards them. The first goal is around grantee outcomes, so we'll be looking this year as our baseline year to increase over the next three years, the percentage of grantees who are able to meet or exceed their outcomes that they identify for each program. In addition, our capacity building and technical assistance efforts, we anticipate hosting 2,500 unique participants across the next three years. Our third area is that we want to see an increase so that at least 50% of the community members that we survey strongly agree or agree that BCYF shares their our results in a clear and effective way. Our fourth goal is to reach the goal of 100% of our infrastructure goals that are developed and implemented by 2026. And finally, our last goal is about this team actually that stands before you, and we're looking to ensure that 100% of our team are able to meet and exceed expectations around our core competencies. I'm going to start by sharing about our grant making and technical assistance successes over the last year. As you know, we have four funds in BCYF. The Grassroots Fund, which specifically highlights the inequities, the national number is that 2% of all grassroots fund organizations receive philanthropic funding. And of course, BCYF knocks it off the map by investing primarily in grassroots funds, usually to the tune of at least 80% of our funding each year goes to grassroots organizations. Community Accountable Fund, which is a fund to acknowledge the ways that organizations with budgets beyond $350,000 that work in ways where they are circling back to the community for accountability. The Aligned Grant Making Fund, which is a fund specifically to work in collaborative ways with other partners. And then the President's Fund, which is a discretionary fund that I utilize to be able to address and be nimble as the President and CEO of BCYF. So we have the good news that by the end of this fiscal year, which is in just a few months, BCYF will have awarded $31.6 million since fiscal year 2021. And how does all of that begin? It begins by a fall announcement. So hopefully, everybody has heard that we were looking to help, for folks to help us drive change. So this year, we invested in bus ads, we were on the radio, we were in the news. Thank you to the Afro, thank you to Heaven 600, thank you to our community partners. We were attending community events. We had neighborhood lawn signs, all announcing that we were looking for the city to help us find the next round of grantee partners. We have $3 million to disburse to grassroots organizations, and these are, of course, citizen dollars, and we wanted the whole city to help us to find these next folks. So we started this process in the fall. And I'm thrilled to say that through all of those efforts, and also, this chamber helped us quite a bit by helping us to spread to your constituents, so we're grateful. We were able to see an uptick in the number of organizations that came and received pre-application technical assistance, which is a program that is run by Hana McOver. So in 2023, we were astonished to host 80 unique organizations for pre-application technical assistance, but that number more than doubled in one year to 201 unique organizations coming to receive support and services, resulting in the astronomical number of 410 unique participants attending, registering for events. And all of that is wonderful, that we were able to get so many people. And then it also speaks to the quality of what they received there, in that 97% report that these sessions did help them in their applications and preparing to apply to the Grassroots Fund. The next step in the process is, of course, the review of the grants. And so we use a community grant review process. We have seen an uptick as well in the number of folks who are applying for these positions, going from 41 reviewers applying in 2022 to nearly doubling that number in 2024 to having 74 applicants. Those applicants are widespread across the city. They live in 27 unique zip codes throughout the city, and 96.5% of them were, of the reviewers currently are identifying as BIPOC. Specifically, 96.5 of the reviewers are identifying as Black or African-American. We also were able to, this year, through the work, this project is the work of Cherie Miller, who's Senior Program Officer at BCYF, and she had the vision, of course, to include young people in the process. And so we're thrilled that 43% of the current reviewers for this year are youth between the ages of 15 and 24. And our current grantee portfolio, the grantees that are with us right now, we have 103 grantees, 103 grantees, amazing partners that are doing incredible work throughout the city, serving young people between the ages of zero to 24. 83% of these organizations are Black or Brown-led. 80.4% of these organizations are receiving multi-year grants, which is, of course, an equity strategy to ensure that they can have more sustainable funding. And we're also thrilled just to report that 40.8% of them are fiscal-sponsored programs. And so collaborating with some of our fiscal-sponsored organizations in the city is a priority to, of course, help to elevate the work that's happening there. And once you become a grantee at BCYF, what are we doing with those 103 people? So a big part of BCYF is also about the capacity building or the ways that we're helping and supporting these organizations to grow so that they can grow their impact and their sustainability. So each grantee is assigned a program officer and a financial compliance officer, and that work is led by our Director of Grant Making, Sharice Page. BCYF also, in addition to that, technical assistance provides impactful convenings and very relevant hands-on professional learning. I think the most exciting thing about me is I love education. I'm an educator, and we have a lot of former educators on our team, so we have very strong and beautiful opinions about learning, that learning happens in community, it happens when trust is built, and it happens consistently in small doses over time. So we're going to share about three of our capacity building signature programs. The first up is the Gathering, and I want to thank you, Councilman Stokes, you came and popped by to the Gathering to see it in action. Also, Councilwoman Porter was present, and we were really appreciative of having that support. So this was our first, but it is now an annual event, our annual convening. The Gathering, we had 251 people registered for this event. The most exciting part about the Gathering is that it was co-designed by a team of 17 grantees and six staff members. 79% of the grantee organizations that we partner with attended the event, which is phenomenal. And we had 20 breakout sessions, all led by local experts, youth performances and support from Governor Moore, Mayor Scott, this council, and also Comptroller Henry, and also some state delegates as well. So it was a really great opportunity for learning and to also share out with our grantees what we have in store along the way. Our next signature program is called the Learning Lab, and our board chair, Larry Simmons, shared how impactful and transformative the opening plenary was, and many of us were present for that event. The Learning Lab is divided, it's a unique program, there's nothing like it in the country, there's nothing like it in the world. It's a six-month learning series where we are really diving into these concepts around experiential learning, building community, building trust and deepening our impact through skill building. We started with an opening plenary where we really were able to dive into our theme for 2024, which is our story, our power, so the power of storytelling and truth-telling through the nonprofit landscape. So we traveled down to Birmingham, Alabama, to the legacy sites, and we're there for three days and able to unpack and come back stronger than ever, deeply transformed by the experience and by the collectivism that we were able to nurture there. That event was sold out in, I believe it was two business days, just to show you the appetite that this, the ecosystem has for professional learning that is innovative and unique. The Learning Circles is the phase that we're in now, and so that event also sold out in a week before its time to close registration. And these are three circles that are operating as explicit skill-building time. We have fundraising, we have storytelling or organizational storytelling, and also program evaluation as the three themes of this work. Of course, these themes rise from national research, local research and conversation with these council members and the grantees themselves about the most urgent needs for building, capacity building, and of course, sustainability. Those sessions are led by local leaders, so we are, of course, putting local people right in front of the grantees to build out their capacities in these ways. And we will invite you all, of course, to come and celebrate with them at the community exhibition in June, where we are setting up an opportunity to see the tangible artifacts from each of the Learning Circles. So you can think of it as kind of like an adult science fair, where each program will be highlighting their artifacts of what they've built through the Learning Circle process. So those are six to eight weeks programs. We also have Gather dinners, and these are events where we are breaking bread for community dialogue and reflection. We were able to be hosted by the Ivy Hotel this week for a singular event connecting Black women leaders in honor of Aswell for Women's History Month. Our April Gather is being hosted by Kiana Goram at the Baltimore Community Tool Bank, and we're really excited to be able to connect with Black-owned restaurants and, of course, some exciting community partners, to bring people together to advance the work of the youth development ecosystem. And finally, we also have our Lab events, which are intergenerational field experiences. Probably for young people, they'll feel like, I went on a great field trip today. But it's an opportunity for us all to experience the power of storytelling here at home in Baltimore and to reflect on the deep lessons learned by experiencing storytelling in clear narrative ways. And again, we're going to culminate in June at the community exhibition, where everyone will be able to highlight and share their work and the key learnings from the opening plenary, the Learning Circles, the Gather dinners and the Labs. And our final signature program is B-Creds, which is a program that is two and a half years in the making. We are very excited. We just launched a call for a focus group for the pilot of the first course, which is how to read a finance report. We know lots of folks from whether you're on a board or on the staff of a nonprofit organization are asked to analyze finance reports on a monthly basis, and that's an area where some skill building is definitely needed and will be appreciated based on our research. And so we are really excited to be able to offer a free micro-credential technical assistance program to the city. There's also nothing like this in the world, and Baltimore will be the first place to have this, we're thinking of it as a Duolingo for nonprofits, a place where you can come and take micro-dosed courses to build your capacity so that you can be more credible as a leader in the ecosystem. Now I'm going to transition over to infrastructure. And we are really thrilled with our infrastructure goals. We are on track that by 2026, we will have implemented, not just built, but built and implemented all of the critical infrastructure for nonprofit management for BCYF by 2026. We started analyzing this data in January of 2022 when I came on board. We were at about 4% at that time, and we have been working hard and strong to build up some of the necessary components so that we can be a fully functioning organization. We're currently standing, since last year, we were at 42% when we saw you, we now have 66% of the infrastructure built. And so what that looks like since last year is the creation of a grant management policy and procedures manual, our first Board of Directors handbook, the first Public Information Act procedure document and templates for the team so that we can quickly respond to Public Information Act requests, our strategic plan, a documentation audit of all of the materials in our possession, our first board evaluation, capacity building and technical assistance policies and definitions, a gift acceptance policy, a tech stack and inventory on all of our technical applications, and data management policies that we're excited to delve into with our Director of Data Management, Erica Miller, who will be helping us to also build a more data-literate organization. Now I'm going to turn it over to Director Goram.
So we are introducing a roadmap for the Avis Ransom Institute that will consist of youth forums, youth curriculum forums, a plug-and-play curriculum and a weekend retreat. In May, in March and in May, we will gather feedback from youth leaders on developing a youth-oriented leadership program, ensuring that the material is engaging, relevant and impactful. The participants will be aged 15 to 24. They can be currently involved in leadership roles within the Baltimore community or school, or they can just be interested in making a change in Baltimore City. They can be interested in personal development and societal change. The forums will lead to what we're calling a plug-and-play curriculum, and within that, we will use the experience from the young people to talk about or to establish a curriculum that is built on their needs and wants. So the specific needs and challenges that are faced by young leaders today will be centered in that. We'll talk about the preferences for their learning styles as well as the content delivery methods. There will be an evaluation of the proposed curriculum and topics and the materials. And the methodology will include the two interactive focus groups, but also surveys and questionnaires, as well as possibly a forum to see how we can better tweak this material. And lastly, we will have, we will launch within this time period of our strategic plan, a weekend leadership retreat that allows for young people not only to gain all of this leadership skill development, but also to network with other organizations that offer leadership opportunities for those youth as they're graduating from the program.
Thank you so much. And to provide that context for the Avis Ransom Institute, it is our pipeline for youth leadership for the Board of Directors for BCYF, where we aim to have one-third of our board membership be consisting of young people from the ages of 14 to 24. And finally, sharing our work. Austin Ubanwa is here, and he is our Marketing Manager, and he does an incredible job sharing our work. He's going to share about all the work today that we're doing here at the hearing. And this year, we are thrilled that we were in the media 23, we had 23 stories in the local media. So thanking to all of our media partners, from the Afro to the Baltimore Business Journal, Channel 13 to WEAA, CBS, WYPR and Voyage Baltimore, who were able to feature the work of BCYF, the work of our grantees out to the community, out to the public, so that we can continue to share about the good work that's happening at BCYF. In addition, BCYF and the team attended 130 events in the community. This includes site visits, community events, some of our small convenings, large convenings, going to support grantees. I see down in the bottom, Senior Director Brandon Hanson celebrating with Cameron Giggins from Rise Arts, a grant that she won through the Johns Hopkins Social Innovation Lab. So we are out in the community, we are vibrant, we are visible, and we're here to support. And our third and final stat is about BCYF Month, and we want to send some gratitude to this chamber as well for helping to support BCYF Month. It is our new annual time of celebrating the incorporation of BCYF in the month of August, three years ago. In addition, it's our time to announce our new grantees. And so hopefully, folks saw the billboards all around town, even though the campaign is over, I rode past one actually yesterday over near Union Mill. So some of the billboards are still up all around town, announcing and congratulating our new grantees on being BCYF grantees, making sure that the community knows where these dollars are going and where the programs are that are being- and where the programs are that are being supported by this work. And we also, of course, had Show Your BCYF Colors. You see our board members supporting that social media strategy up at the top. And also, City Hall changed its colors for BCYF Month. We had City Hall change their colors to BCYF red, yellow, and blue. We were also honored to receive a recognition from Mayor Scott. So this was a great opportunity. We did some fundraising, some friend-raising, and a lot of awareness campaigning so that folks know who BCYF is and what the work is that we're doing, what we're up to. So finally, just to wrap up, we have, just a wrap-up of our work for the year. This is us by the numbers. We have, of course, completed one strategic plan. We're excited to implement and to realize our five strategic plan goals. BCYF has 103 grantees in our portfolio. Within a few short weeks, by the end of fiscal year '24, we will have awarded $31.6 million since the incorporation of BCYF into the public. We have 83% of those organizations in our portfolio are Black and Brown-led. 66% of our infrastructure is complete and implemented, and we have 130 events in the community just this year alone. And thank you for letting us present about our work.
Thank you. I just want to recognize Tyler from the Mayor Scott's office and Dexter from President Mosby's office.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And now we're going to have some testimony. We have one of our grantees present.
Okay, can they come up to the podium and press the button on the right-hand side?
Absolutely. Ms. Redman?
Ms. Redman, can you come up to the podium? Right-hand button, you can press that and identify yourself also.
First of all, good morning.
Good morning.
I want to first acknowledge and give praise to God for an opportunity to once again be in the Clarence D. Burns Chambers. It's such a special place for me to come back to after 22 years of not being in this space. I'm really, really honored that the Youth Fund, Alicia asked me to come and to give testimony on behalf of a project like the Baltimore City Youth Fund. I guess I wanted to cue for where do I start? Because I'm not really sure. So I'll add this. And I'll say this. Roughly 25 years ago, I was invited to come into City Hall to bring my youth program. At that time, we were the only youth media program in Baltimore City. We were asked to come here, and the children were allowed to meet in the Board of Estimates Room on Saturdays. Children came from public and private schools. At that time, I did not know that we were the first project to put public and private school children together to work on a program. That program evolved, and I was invited to take on a job in the Mayor's Office for Children and Youth. I was offered that job, and I accepted it if they could make it a part-time job, because I hadn't worked for anyone in about 15 years, and I wasn't sure I could adapt. But I did adjust. And from that experience, I ended up being the first Black person hired in the Mayor's Office for Children and Youth. And I have to let you know I was the first one fired, too. Just if, if nothing else, at 73 years old, I've come to this occasion in moments like this with young people who were probably in elementary and middle school when we were out front in City Hall, picketing to get the retirement pension funds divested from South Africa. That's how long I've been doing the work. I'm here to say that I'm very proud of you, young people. Clarence D. Burns would be very proud of the work that the Baltimore City Youth Fund has done. You're given articulation. You're putting tools and processes in place that will hit the ground in Baltimore City. We have watched this project from afar before ourselves were actually funded, which was last year. How can a person who was called into City Hall end up to be first Black hired in that office for children and youth simply because someone looked out, and that person was Donald Schaefer and saw what I was putting together? Part of my job in the Mayor's Office on Children and Youth was to write the charter for something called the Mayor's Children's Youth Council, which was patterned after the real adult city council. We brought students then from Oregon and University of Maryland to put that youth council together. The long and short of it is this, folks. It's taken a long time for an independent, Black-run fund to come to Baltimore City to have the kind of wherewithal, breadth, and depth to make sure that the right people get funded and to make sure that we are sustainably funded. We are very tired of funding that comes, and it's so shallow that you don't understand that it's going to take more than one year. It's going to take more than two years to you to try to leverage the oppression and racism some of us have experienced trying to save the lives of our children in this city. If we do not speak truth to power, power will begin to not see its own reflection. We have to be very clear, very clear, that the time is now. We need to be very clear that I'm proud to say that former Mayor Jack Young saw the wisdom to put this question on the ballot, on the ballot, that citizens voted for the existence of something called a youth fund and for a certain percentage of the tax base from housing to go to set that fund aside for this to be happening for us right now. It's very important that you understand your history. I represent the East Baltimore Historical Library, by the way. The East Baltimore Historical Library is in the area where 750 families were involuntarily dislocated, and those families included children. The data that came across my table about the wherewithal of the children and families who were dislocated, they represented some of the lowest or highest poverty rates in Baltimore City. Those were the young people that I was used to working with, and those were neighborhoods all over the city that were underfunded, and those voices were not heard. Be very clear that Black women in particular, all over this city, have been helping to save the lives of the children who do not hit the 6 o'clock news. Most of us have put, taken funds out of our own budgets in our homes to serve the children in our neighborhoods. We no longer have communities in Baltimore City, and we haven't had them for some time. These are neighborhoods, these are tribal groups, tribal groups functioning to try to survive what's happening right now with the educational system and just everyday economic development prices and realities. One thing I'd like to say, trying to stay on script, forgive me, Councilwoman Stokes, but trying to stay on script, but it's taken a long time. But I wanted to say that no one prepared us to deal with post, quote-unquote, "post-COVID" children's behavior. This is a very serious matter. We need to understand no one, child or adult, is the same as we were pre-COVID. Time itself has folded upon itself, and you can't even keep days straight. I'm talking to somebody the other day, yesterday is the exact. She, I thought I spoke to her last week. She said, "Ms. Redman, you spoke to me yesterday." But then I'm 73, but not that extreme. But time is different, the children's behavior is different, their parents' behavior is different. No one thought of a strategy to serve the needs of people who went through the isolation and the trauma of COVID. It's being reflected in the hallways of our class, our schools, our classroom behavior. And then you have those people in those institutions saving those children, serving those children, rather, who are afraid to let you know the behavior is off the chain of children after COVID. Something seriously is going to have to be addressed, whether you call it trauma or forward intervention. Trauma, what do you want to call it, trauma, informed intervention? Well, the bus has left the station. You need to catch up. Our children are in trouble, and we need to take a look at the effects of COVID on our children's behavior and do what we can. So you have groups like the Baltimore City Youth Fund here, and these people are setting up things like the Learning Labs, which, and they're talking about micro doses of learning modules, something that's very, very much needed. Like, for an example, I signed up for the storytelling learning module so I could learn how to tell my story in three minutes, because I'm rather verbose. But when you have a lot to say, because you've experienced a lot firsthand. I was explaining to Ms. Alicia today. She had no idea I used to work in City Hall before they fired me. I used to be in the Mayor's Office for Children and Youth only because I dealt with innovative, imaginative programming. Like a Pied Piper, I will activate children. That is my passion, to activate children in youth. I am so proud and so pleased to meet the number of young people I met when I went on the trip to Alabama, and I could see all over the city. You have bright lights, Mr. Stokes. These young people are in their 40s and their 30s. They're creating innovative programming for our young people. And thank goodness that it's in the control of Black management. That's important. There's no, we can't joke about that. We can't act like we can't say that out publicly. We're in the Clarence D. Burns Chambers. D. Burns is certainly the person that told us we could speak truth to power. People need to understand what this chamber represents to be named after Clarence D. Burns. He was not the Rhodes Scholar, but he is the person that the average Black child in Baltimore can relate to. They can't relate to the Rhodes Scholar, but they can relate to the person who was the shower attendant that became the mayor. That's the story that needs to be told, and that's the children that these people are servicing. The average one of these children is not going to make it to the college campus. I'm dealing with 14-year-olds dropping out of school. Like, it kind of broke my heart for that parent. Share with me, at 14, Dunbar High School, got in Dunbar from City Springs, and this child got robbed on the way home from baseball practice, and this child didn't want to go back to school. No trauma intervention counseling. It's not my child, but I called the counselor's office to find out, "Did you know this happened to that child?" "No, we didn't." I said, "Well, now that you know that happened, are there any services for that child?" "Don't know." But those are the kind of stories that I represent. They're painful stories, but I just felt a need to try to share some of what I've experienced and the hope that we have in this Baltimore City Youth Fund. I'm really pleased that, to be here and in front of Councilwoman Stokes, to be the Chair of the Education Committee, and to say to you, sir, very proud of the work that you're doing. Hopefully, this youth fund will continue to get the type of funding, sustainable funding, that it needs. Hopefully, the youth fund will keep listening, listening to the people on the ground and servicing our need. At 73, with the whole world being digital, I feel like Harriet Tubman meeting up with the tech age. And it's all I can do to be very grateful for the fact that you all have patience with us, and you're setting up tech learning labs, workshops, to teach us older people how to access data and move along and not become dinosaurs. I'm going to leave you with this story. There are two ways in life, young people, I'm talking to you. There are two ways in life that you can shed light. You can either be a candle, or you can be the mirror that reflects that light. I hope I'm a mirror that reflects the light of this youth fund. It's doing good work. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for those words. I'm just going to say real quick, Ms. Neen knew me when my mother had two sets of twins. I was the second set. And my mother had double baby carriages, so she always remind me. She knew I was in the baby carriage, so. And I not only say that because I was very fortunate to have my mother and father in the same household, but I had community support. You know, and Ms. Neen was talking about the trauma and people moving somewhere and not staying there long. That's why we have those disconnects in our community. So we have to create more homeownership for Black people. And I wanted to mention it because I always talk about equity. That's a buzzy word. What is it doing for Black people in this city? Everybody dropped the word, but I want to see some results. I want to see some data, you know, so. I keep hearing that word. It kind of bothers me that what is the equity policy you have in place to make sure organizations in this book? My question is, I'm looking at your grant-making. Do you have the data for Grant Groups Fund, Line Grant Fund, all those organizations that receive money? And the reason why I'm saying that, some of the organizations that never got money before, and you had the technical assistance, do you have data to show those ones that did not receive a grant before now are receiving a grant? Because I think that's a story y'all should be telling also in this book.
That sounds great.
Because you know, we hear a lot of people say they didn't get a chance, they didn't get the money. You got a lot of technical assistance going on. You need to go back and look at that data and ask them exactly, find out those organizations that never received money. And Ms. Neen, I know y'all hear, "Oh, we got an organization, we don't never get no money." So those organizations that never received money, get that data to show how y'all work closely with your technical assistance, because you're doing some great things. My question is for Brandon. My question is, you said 71% of the positions are filled? Is that, am I correct?
Sharona Lawrence, VP of Operations.
Yes.
So those 71, what other positions do you have that are open? Can you make sure this committee get their information? Because if it's 71%, you're almost talking about almost 30% still not filled. And people looking for work, and I'm sure y'all have training opportunities for young people especially. I'd like to see some more young people. I'm not saying y'all are not young, but some younger people sitting on it, being a part of this youth fund. You know, because they're the ones that have the ideas, the influence. They know what they want, they know what they want to see, so.
And that's exactly what we're looking at right now. What we had to do was build the foundation and make sure that we had a strong foundation. So we don't want any cracks. We don't want to have to fill it with foam a little bit later. You know, you understand foundation. You don't want to fill it with foam. So our focus has been to, especially with operations, is restructure, recruit, and retention. So we're looking at growing the team, and as we continue to grow the team, we continue to get stronger. So I'm excited about possibly filling the last, like, 30% by the end of this year. That is our goal.
Thank you. I also want to acknowledge some of the members of the committee. Councilman Bullock from the 9th District, Councilman Cohen from the 1st District, and Councilman Torrance from the 7th District. So we already went over the presentation you have in the front, and I'm sure y'all have some questions that you'd like to ask. Councilman Bullock?
So again, just thank you so much. You know, the Children and Youth Fund is such an important piece in our district. It's good to see some of the folks who are really behind the scenes. Just one of the questions, any changes you've seen or that you envision seeing in terms of operations moving forward with this year? Because obviously, you've had several years through the process. Any lessons learned and changes you think will be on the horizon?
Sure. I would say over the next three years, we'll be focusing on closing the gap around infrastructure. Two years ago, we were at 26%, and now today, we're at 66%. So this next year, we'll be focusing on getting up to that 85% so that by 2026, we have 100% of the infrastructure forced and in play, planned, built, and implemented. So that'll be our focus.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to the team. Do appreciate the good work that you all have been doing. I want to ask, it's a question asked the last time we were talking, specifically in terms of strategy and addressing some of the violence that our children have experienced in Baltimore, just the post-pandemic mental health. I don't want to call it a crisis, but... I don't want to call it a crisis, but I think in Baltimore, across the country, we see a lot of young people that are still hurting. We see the exacerbation of conflicts through social media. We know in this city, it is incredibly easy to get a gun, and unfortunately, many of our young people end up using one. So I want to ask specifically about sort of the collaborative, collective strategy around violence reduction and trauma-informed restorative practices. Like, how are we thinking about this mental health piece and just the climate that so many of our children are in?
Sure. Thank you so much, Councilman, for that great question. Ms. Redmond just spoke about, and she referred to it as a crisis as well, the deep impacts that the COVID pandemic has had on us as adults, as families, what we see happening with young people, the isolation, the tragedies. I think it'll take years for us to unpack and uncover exactly what we've all experienced collectively, but we are, as a society, working to support each other in those ways. At BCYF, one of our core strategies for grant making is doing well by doing, which looks at wellness as a key outcome for Baltimore City young people. In addition to that, our signature programs have opportunities for organizations to develop skill building around youth development, specifically our B-Cards program, which is in its pilot phase right now, specifically starting with financial literacy and delving into youth development practice. And as an organization, we have developed a pathway around restorative justice, looking at ways that organizations can use restorative justice practices from an institutional level, interpersonally and also institutionally. And so we are in a year-long journey for our organization, for our team, to learn about restorative practice. And what we learned, and we hope to then leverage as knowledge that we can use to build modules and learning programs for organizations that we serve. So restorative justice, we know and think of as a community-based practice to solve conflict, and we're imagining how it can be used as a pedagogical tool and also how it can be used as an interpersonal tool for organizations, so that organizations can be healthy internally and externally.
Appreciate that. And look, I think, you know, one of the challenges we have in Baltimore is a lot of folks, Larry and I talk about this all the time, doing great work in different spaces, but it often gets siloed, and particularly as it relates to youth advocacy and restorative justice and all that. And I think one of the roles that the youth fund can really play is to be that convener because frankly, you all have money and resources and really good brain power, and so I hope that you will both, all of the things that you just mentioned, but also help to stitch some of the groups together and blend funds and all the rest. Because I think the whole city, you know, there was a bill in Annapolis, there's conversation at the school board around what are we going to do for our young people that are hurting, and whether it's restorative practices or conflict resolution, I really think there's a role for the youth fund to play in that. My last question was just around youth on the board. I know when we passed the bill, as I mentioned, that was a really important piece for me and for several of my colleagues, and I see the Avis Ransom Institute. Where are we at in terms of having youth not just like at the table, but really driving the conversation and leading this really important work?
Sure. And I can recap a little bit about BCYF's role as a convener. We, in our new mission statement as a part of our strategic plan, really see ourselves as being the direct service to the organizations and leaders of the youth-serving organizations, not to the young people themselves, and just really helping to make that really clear for all of, for everybody, for us, so that we're not bleeding over into providing direct youth service. And we do see ourselves as a convener. So already this year alone, I believe the number is already, it's March, our goal by the end of 2026 is 2,500 unique participants to come through the doors and participate in our signature events. At this point, we're already, we know we have 410 through pre-application technical assistance. We just convened the Learning Lab where we took 103 folks down with us for the opening plenary. The Learning Circles, of course, have sold out. All of our programs sell out immediately because there's an appetite for the kind of learning and innovative programming we're providing. We want to be the container, but also the, I would say, the agitator around really elevating the work that's happening by building trust with the folks that we work with, and then by implementing some skill building and making space for the innovation that that bright network of leaders has. And we want to be there to be, of course, a convener and a supporter of that work, but also to work arm-in-arm with them. So we are full throttle with convening specifically around learning. We have a lot of former educators on our team, so we have very strong opinions about what it takes to be a learning environment, and we're doing that work, and we're seeing big benefits. People are using words that are participating in our programs like transformative, lifelong, lasting impact. We've already seen folks in programs start to collaborate. This is all within the last few months from our Learning Lab already. So that work is happening, and it's active, and it's exciting to watch. And then in terms of the youth on the board, so our pathway and pipeline for board, youth board seats is, of course, through the Avis Ransom Institute. And so the Avis Ransom Institute is now under the leadership of Kiana Gorm, and she presented a while ago about the three pathways for the work, and so I'll turn it over to her just to give a little bit of a deeper dive into what's happening with Avis Ransom.
Thank you for the question. So we're starting off with some youth forums to get some youth buy-in on what it is that we're teaching. I am a strong believer, as most people that work with us at BCYF, in youth being involved in all areas of the work as much as possible. And an area of opportunity that we saw was that the curriculum itself had not been informed by any youth at all. So we're opening up that opportunity now. So in next week, as well as in May, we'll have some youth participants that are coming in and looking at what we have put together as a curriculum and informing how they want to receive that, as well as the different avenues through which it happens. So that's step one. Step two after that comes in a couple of different ways. One is called plug-and-play curriculum, and the other one is called the weekend retreat leadership, like a weekend for the young folks. The plug-and-play curriculum allows for us to go to grantees as well as other organizations within Baltimore City who are providing youth development classes or courses, and we will bring Avis Ransom to them. We will take their young people through the leadership process, and at the conclusion of that, they will not only have a real grasp on the type of leader that they are, the problem that they want to solve, but they also will be eligible to apply to utilize that on our board, as well as any other organizations that have opportunities for youth leadership. So we had to revamp a bit, and we are in the process right now of recruitment for that.
Absolutely.
The weekend retreat won't happen for a little while, and that's a combination of those things for the weekend, and it's a more intensive experience where there's, where there will be networking opportunities for young people, both with youth together as well as other youth-serving organizations, and hopefully some HBCUs there as well.
Thank you so much, Kiana. And also, one of my colleagues wanted me to remind the council that we have the Share Community Grant Review Process. 43% of the reviewers are young people, ages 14 to 24. So we're just looking for opportunities, of course, to bring young people to make, help us make decisions and to be collaborators in decision-making at BCYF.
Thank you very much for that. Thanks for the good work you're doing. And is that, is that how many young people are on the board?
The 43%? No, that's the Community Grant Review Process. So right now, the board, board piece is being led by that Avis Ransom Institute, I would say a reconversion of the curriculum that's being led by young people, and that program will launch this summer, and that's where the board pipeline is coming from.
Got it. So currently, no young people on the board?
That's correct.
But we are working to
Elevate the work.
To where we're supposed to be.
That's right, yeah. So we're really looking to revamp the curriculum so that it's youth-centered and youth-driven. So we're going back to young people to say, great, help us to elevate this, so this is the place where you all want to be.
Understood. Thank you. Appreciate the good work.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I have a question. You know, there's a broadband disconnect in the city, especially with young people. Are you working on, working with Tech Hub, because they have a lot of money? We want to make sure that equity is in our neighborhoods. If you work with young people and families, my other question is, how do we address the poverty piece to that? Because if you can't eat, you ain't a bit interested in a computer, whether you got broadband, when you go to school and you never ate, didn't get no food, how young people, when they go to school, they go to sleep? So how do we, how do we incorporate the housing and the broadband piece in here in poverty?
Yes.
How y'all work and have a piece in?
I can tell you the part that keeps me up at night currently is how it affects our team. We are, we work as a hybrid team, but we, 90% of our work is remote, and we live in a city with a digital divide. And so we aim, of course, to be able to recruit and work with local talent. That means that in order to do that, we have to be a learning organization, because folks don't show up with all of the skills and resources to be able to work on a remote team with efficacy. So that's what keeps me up at night presently, and we're doing a lot of training around working remotely and building up skills and capacities for the team. And so we can spend some time also thinking about the organizations that we serve, how that may impact them, and of course, the children and youth in the city.
My other question is, I work closely with Todd Scott, who started Program Car Re-Rise with his own money. We go over to Charles Hickey and talk to young people. Are we connecting those kind of young people that might not have a parent in the household to find out how we can assist them also? Because if we talking about youth, we talking about, we talk about the good ones, we can talk about the ones that really need the support systems? And one of them, we see, was, we talking about juvenile services, what's happening all over the city. Is it any way y'all working closely? I don't know if it could be Todd Scott, there's a lot of organizations out here working with our young people who really need that support system. Are y'all working with those kind of organizations?
Yeah, I'll let Larry.
Yeah, we're working with a very diverse group of grantees. I mean, you have folks from Uncle T to Lisa Moloch, right? So we are working with organizations that serve and represent the diverse makings of our young people, right? I think that we sometimes spend a lot of money on a very small portion of young people, and so we're making sure that all of our young people are being supported through the different types of programming that our grantees are providing. And just to kind of speak back to young people on the board, we had, you know, three young people that were on our board, and just so happened that their terms ended at a time that Ms. Gorm was coming on and being able to create this pathway through Avis Ransom. So just like everybody, young people are on the front of our minds through all of this work.
So I think this is a great presentation, it got some great numbers in it, but I just don't see the part about Mr. T and Re-Rise. Yeah, because I think that should be highlighted, where y'all expanding to those type of support systems that's needed in households, and maybe the poverty piece, like, keep talking about it. I never went to sleep hungry, I never woke up hungry. We're very fortunate, but a lot of families, kids go to sleep hungry, and you expect them to go to school, you expect them to learn, they ain't a bit interested in a laptop, they ain't a bit interested in the broadband, ain't a bit computer, none of that. So only bringing that up because we have to connect the poverty piece to all the services that we provide for young people. We got food deserts all over Baltimore City, so you know, it's a whole lot of things there that need support systems. So any other, okay, thank you. Councilman Torrance?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I love the presentation. I'm just still amazed that City Schools has not come on board to be a part of this. As the largest institution with 77,000 young people, I think they would be one of the major conveners at the table with you with this, especially given their grant-making capacity with federal funds, in addition to the number of your grantees that actually house their programs in their school buildings on their actual sites. So I think, I think that is something I think we need to have a conversation with from not only the administration, but also the council in driving that conversation, that our young people not only experience through their programming through you, but also through City Schools, and that they need to be at the table. And I just want to be frank, because, make this very public, this is one of those moments where the school district can do better, especially when a number of the programs provide them with after-school programming as well as enrichment for our young people. So I think that as I look at this and the sustainability of these programs, if they're housing your building, you should be vested in their sustainability as they are invested in your family. So I'm just going to make sure that my colleagues, if you want to join in me on a letter to City Schools about having this partnership move, I think it should happen. Thank you.
Is that a request, Councilman?
Yes, sir. I'm going to make that request to City Schools, that we have a meeting with members of the council as well as the youth fund to discuss partnership and sustainability of programs in their buildings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, hi. I'm talking this, right. Hi, Councilman Cohen, and sorry you were late, you missed my presentation. The other young man, I'm sorry you were late too. I certainly agree with you, what you're talking about, about the school system being a part of the table and the convention that these people are doing. But be very clear, some of us who are being funded through the youth fund, we have after-school programs. We have the opportunity now to put our after-school programs in these schools. I'm at the Henderson-Hopkins School. Before the youth fund, I couldn't afford to bring alternative grassroots after-school programming into that school. There are other programs funded by this youth fund, the CHS Boardroom, they're in schools, they're also in rec centers. Joni Holyfield, Heart Smiles. You know what is really interesting, and maybe, I'm a little old now, so bear with me for a minute, just turned 73, I like to put that up as an excuse for me being verbose, but to say this, be very clear that this project is causing people who are on the ground, working with young people across this city, to begin to network like it's never been done in 20 years. Those answers for some of the problems we have, not all of the problems, but some of the problems that have been systemic and longitudinal in the school system, the answer's not coming from the school system. It's going to come from groups that are being funded for the first time, sustainable funding from this group right here. Trust me on that. You miss the fact that I have 40 years, I feel like a relic, really, okay? Most of these are younger people that we're talking with who are getting this funding. It's unfortunate that more of them can't be here today. It's sad that more of the council people were not here to hear from this group. The first group in Baltimore City to get the kind of funding that can make long-impact change on our children. Yeah, more of you should have been here, that's my personal opinion. I understand, being the first black person hired to work in the mayor's office for children and youth, and I'm going to reference that, because that was a challenge, to get me, a person that looked like me, in that office when I got that job. I've watched the, Mr. Stokes spoke earlier about data, he'd like to see data reflected in their report about groups who normally don't get funded. Well, Ms. Redmond finally got funded when the youth fund showed up. I've been out here since I was, before I was 30, voluntarily working with children all over this city. I don't understand why there should be more Nea Redmonds coming behind me that don't get an opportunity for funding. As I said before, I, you know, really appreciate what you're saying, understand silo working, that's what these people were talking about, moving beyond silo working. You have to take some lessons from major organizations in this city, major stakeholders. Johns Hopkins University and Hospital, University of Maryland, they've been working to get their departments to work, come out of silo work, and they've been trying that for the last 10 years. That was a piece that Ron Daniels said when he came to town, he was moving these people from working in silos. This is not going to happen overnight for people to start, come out of these silo works, but we will lead by example, we will let you know that soon, or than you thought. This kind of work is happening with people like myself and younger people, because I don't know, I could have been the oldest person funded by this grassroots fund, I'm not sure. I know you have Kim Truheart in West Baltimore, but we're kind of old timers, we're trying to catch up with the young people that have tech savvy. But what we have, which is so critical for them, is we have the history of inequity, non-funding, public school system that has failed our children for the last 40 years. There's no sense in thinking this just showed up. So no sense to come here and expect this group to magically fix all of this stuff in three years, four years? This is a major task we have here. So it is critical, just like the city council, and we don't expect you to be able to get it right in four years. We definitely don't expect you to be able to get it right in eight years. We definitely don't expect you to be able to get it right in eight years. So, really, please don't put that kind of burden on us. The reality of it, we're at the tables, some of us brought our own table. Chisels say, bring your chair. Don't have a chair for you? Well, some of us brought our own table, okay? We are here from across the city. We are networking because of the experience of just being a part of this Youth Fund, that it would have the understanding to take us on a trip, like down to the Legacy Museum, which I think all of you should go to, the Legacy Museum, to see where we've come from, and the bonding that happened from us seeing the trauma that inequities, injustice has caused our people to be in disarray and silo work now. We came back to Baltimore with a commitment, some of us, that we will network like we've never seen before. And that's an opportunity for me to introduce you to Baltimore Nosy Neighbors. Baltimore Nosy Neighbors is being funded by this Youth Fund. I haven't really announced that, but I'll do it today, simply because we have the presence of people like yourselves. Baltimore Busy Neighbors flips the script on Stop Snitching. Stop Snitching. Everybody's nosy, whether you, you know, on the low snozy, you know, everybody's nosy. We're, Baltimore Nosy Neighbors is a youth podcast that's getting ready to be launched. It's coming out of the Henderson-Hopkins After-School Program, funded by the Youth Fund. We have networks with youth programs across the city to begin a youth news network called Baltimore Nosy Neighbors. We have to begin, Mr. Cohen, so be patient. Sorry I took up too much time, Mr. Stokes, but it was a pleasure to see you someplace, Mr. Cohen, besides my front porch. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is any more questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First off, I want to say I appreciate your work, Ms. Redmond, over the years. I do want to address, Councilman Torrance and I were at a previous event. We indicated that to the chair. This hearing was scheduled three days ago, so apologies, no disrespect intended, but we do appreciate your longstanding work in East Baltimore, particularly as it relates to inequities, dealing with Johns Hopkins, particularly as it relates to what you said about the 20 years-plus of silos in our city. I think everything you said was right, and I don't think anyone in this chamber is putting it on the Youth Fund to de-silo Baltimore, right? That said, though, I do think this can and should be a convening body for our city. I think that is some of the work that is already started, and I remember when we were passing this bill, there was president at the time, Jack Young, another East Baltimore guy, who was really clear and adamant that the Youth Fund had to be not just $13 million or just like a, you know, more cash that we would hand out, but that it should be a transformative vehicle for not even just our kids, but intergenerationally. And that's why I'm glad to see your leadership in the organization, is that, you know, as I've been thinking lately about not just our children, but the need for our elders to be at the table in a meaningful way, and the importance of intergenerational work, and what it means, having been a teacher in West Baltimore and seeing so many of our kids, not just raised by parents, but raised by grandparents or elders as well. And so, again, want to appreciate your work. I think everyone up here is clear about the role that you've played in anchoring East Baltimore for a very long time, and I'm just excited to see where some of the energy with the Youth Fund is going, and I very much look forward to seeing the young people on the board, having come through the Avis Ransom Institute, because again, that was a major piece when we were five years ago, six years ago deliberating this bill, was that it would have all the generations represented, and that's when I think Baltimore will win. And I want to say thank you again, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any more questions? There is no public testimony, no call-ins?
I know I live in West Baltimore now, but you know, I'm an East Baltimore boy. Ms. Redmond, I want to thank you for all the work you've done. I just want to clarify my comment, because this is an ongoing question I've had with City Schools about how to be involved with the Youth Fund, especially as our commitment to them will reach almost $700 million in the next three years in terms of investment from the city of Baltimore. As we're investing more in our young people, I think programs that are grassroots, are in our schools, should be getting a significant portion of that Carowen funding that's coming their way, right? Because what I saw was, while I don't control their budget and how they allocate their budget, I think that there needs to be a moral understanding that while we're doing wholeness, wholeness includes enrichment programs after school, where schools don't have to make a choice between paying for a teacher and paying for an after-school program, or paying for an additional social work. I think that we need to have those conversations, school by school. That's why this past budget season, I asked the district for proof of where the money went for the teacher positions that they funded through Carowen, that they closed out, and where the set funds go. I saw an issue where I saw they didn't send it towards after-school programs in their buildings, right? They were paying for technology upgrades that should have been paid for centrally and not from a school budget. So, I just want to make sure the public understands why I asked for this request, because as their budget is approaching, I need to see more of their moral standing and high ground reflected in set budgets at school levels, too.
Thank you, Councilman. Appreciate that. So, we don't have any call-ins, so I just want to personally thank everybody, colleagues, but I want to thank the Youth Fund, Madam CEO. I always talk about this, I'm proud of what y'all doing in this city, because you done moved the needle, a whole lot of steps that probably people didn't thought you could do. So, I'm proud to say I'm one of your big supporters. Keep doing what you're doing, and I know, Councilman Cohen, and before you came, and I talked about, we need to see more young people on the board, and they acknowledged that. So, thank you again. Appreciate the work you're doing. It's not easy. We know it's not easy, but you make it look easy. So, proud of you guys, and this hearing is in recess. Thank you.